All set.
Thank you. Okay, it is six oh one and I'd like to get to May first Eastline Board of Ed special meeting called the meeting quarter for those who can ride, you can ride. First order, is there a public comment? Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, hearing none that public comment and then the next order is we have some special recognition. I'll turn it over to Jeff to get started and then you can all contribute.
Excellent, thank you, Erin. Before we jump in and bring Jason forward, just for some discussions about his retirement, I wanted to introduce Carissa Gullix into the full board. So Carissa has interest. Yeah, third week now, you were two weeks in now. Yes, so she's. Day eleven. I keep telling myself that day eleven, okay, don't worry too much at her. Yeah, but she's doing a great job and many thanks. Yes, yeah, well, that's, that's why we're there. Absolutely. She's off to a great start, working great with Kim. You know, Kim's been a big help and everybody in our central office. So I just wanted the board to have an opportunity to meet Carissa and put a name on the face when you hear from her. So. All right, thanks, Chris. And we're gonna send her home because. A busy week this week. So thanks, Carissa. Thanks. Have a good night. And yeah, the opportunity, I would would be remiss not to just take some time as a, you know, organization and myself and to just call upon Jason Bitgood, who has decided after twenty-six years in Eastlime to retire. And, you know, I think we were lucky that, you know, I think he stayed a little extra time, extra year or two. And, you know, we were blessed to have him to do that. You know, Jason is one of a kind. He's a one in a million administrator. And it has just been a true honor and a privilege to work with him, you know, over these past eight years, both as the assistant principal when he was assistant principal, then we hired him on as the principal. And, you know, just has done an outstanding job at the middle school, has formed a great team there, works great with his staff. And, you know, Jason is one of the most caring and kind people I've ever met. And, you know, it's, it's just a joy to be able to talk with him on a daily basis and watch him do his work. And didn't care about the people that that he works with. And I think that's what makes a great leader. And Jason has been a great leader. So, Jason, thank you. And board members, you know, I wanted to share a few words. And many of you know Jason. He was a teacher, he was a math coach and assistant principal, high school principal or a middle school principal and just done a lot of great things.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your time. We really appreciate that. You'll lots of reflection when you decide to walk away. The last month has been the most challenging of my career, not because of issues in school or budget or HR, those things. But you think about the support that you have for, it sounds better when you say the word a century. I had so many great mentors and, you know, people around me that have just supported me and cultivated me into the board, given me opportunities to do what I do. And I, you know, I can't express my gratitude enough for that. It's been life changing. And I can't, you know, I am finishing a career that's been so rewarding to me at a spot where it's perfect for me. My memories of Eastline are unbelievable. The staff of Eastline is extraordinary. And I want to always continue and make sure that they get recognized for that. The administrative team, my colleagues here have just been a joy to work with and answered all my questions. And they carry me and supported me through some tough times in central office. I, you know, work for a lot of people. As a board, you have an extraordinary central office as well. It just has super supportive. And Jeff, every time I bother him with a phone call, which is pretty lonely, he calls me back promptly and we work through the problem. Um, that said, you know, a big thanks to everyone. I can't name everyone. I've been here a long time. This has been my home, it's been my community. And, you know, I'm very remiss if I didn't say the students and the families. It really made the difference for me. I've never wanted to work anywhere else, you know. And I'm proud to be able to say the only district I've ever worked in is Eastline. We're gonna keep it that way. Um, that's it. I'll be an ambassador for Eastline. I will all spread the good word for Eastline. And from a distance, I will stay in tune with what happens in Eastline. So it's true to my heart and here we are. So thank you.
Can I just say, I've just been such a big fan of you, Mr. Bitgood. And just I've always admired your ability to problem solve and you're a problem solver and you think outside of the box and no problem is too big. And I just have always admired how you frame things and solve things. So definitely, it's been a pleasure to know you. Thank you.
Okay, we have some minutes to approve. From the April seventeenth special meeting. Any changes, comments? I hear a motion to approve minutes. A second.
A second.
Candace, when we go through this, if you could do a thumbs up, raise your hand, do something to acknowledge. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Candace. Adrian, you another?
Aye, sorry.
No problem. Opposed, abstained, and approved. Minutes passed. So the first topic on the agenda is one that we've been looking forward to, I think, for a little while now. And we finally have gotten through some budget time where we can get and give a good the amount of time on the agenda that this topic is due, because it's something that's, I think, near and dear to all our hearts and something that we do want to focus on. So it's a presentation on the middle school fifth grade transition study. And there's been a lot of work that's done and really look forward to carrying it and going through this.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for that. And so I am here to watch the presentation tonight. And I kind of hand the reins over to Claudine Kelly, who is our new interim principal, starting on the twelfth. And Shane Anderson is the current ten month moving up to the twelve. So collectively, as a team, we've done a lot of work in this problem practice and how we're gonna enhance that grade four to five transition. But without me talking, I'm gonna hand it over to my colleagues here and.
So everybody can see that on their computer. There's some data and some, all right, great. Hi. Welcome, Claudine Shane.
Okay, sure. Hi, I'm Claudine Kelly. I am one of the assistant principals, soon to be interim for the middle school. So thank you for your time this evening and.
Shane Anderson, the current ten month assistant principal from the middle school, excited to present this information as well. I hope you're all having a great evening. So I am gonna get it started with kind of the why. Why did we embark on the project in the first? I'm gonna tell you some data that you've seen before. It was in Miss Spaziano's presentation from the fall. But it really started our conversation a little bit. So this is growth scores from grades four to grade five for ELA on ASVAT last year. So this was kind of telling to us. You can see the lines in yellow are Eastline, grade four is the first and grade five in the second. We know our achievement across the board. Performance is always high. We know our growth stories as they come from grade four to five tend to have a dip. So we wanted to take a broader look into this. Now, I should say, in terms of the schools here, I looked at it earlier. Only five of the schools on here actually have grade five at the middle school level. So something else to consider when looking at this data. But we know in terms of ELA and in terms of math, there's a dip there that we really wanted to take a closer look at.
You just with schools?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. I would love to ask questions throughout the presentation.
The schools are five B. We'll tell you I didn't write the bottom down, but there are five of them. Eastline is one of them. Old Sabre is one of them.
Sorry, remember to.
I think Ranford.
Yeah, Ranford, I think it's.
Site isn't there. New Milford?
Milford.
Milford, okay, sorry. This is New Milford.
Oh, yeah, New Milford's on there. Sorry, yep.
So there are a few that do have grade five at the middle school level. And when you do look at the data from four to five of those schools, it is all over. So some kind of maintain some dip as well.
And I don't, I don't want to interrupt the presentation, but as you go through it, it'd be interesting to get your perspective of is that the right thing that we have? And I know buildings and everything, but from an academic perspective, if no, if most people don't do it that way, what's your perspective? Go through your presentation, but it'd be good to understand and get, just get your viewpoints.
At the beginning of the school year, remember, we did communicate with staff and the whole and, you know, reach out and make requests for people who are interested in joining our committee to participate. I think we had a really good sampling with regards to the composition of the individuals that made up the team. As you can see, there was a mix of our grade five, six English language teachers, ELA teachers, math teachers. And we also had a five, six social study teacher. We get representation from all the names are, we had a social worker that represented our social emotional. We had our coaches as well, both our leaders coach and our hat coach. We had a student who helped, who is critical with regards to succeeding when it comes to scheduling and looking at things from a scheduling point of view. And then Jason, Shane and myself.
She had a total of what, about fifteen people in that meeting? Was it fifteen?
Yeah, there were.
Yeah, it's a good assessment.
So this kind of gives you an overview of what the committee work looked like during the course of the year. That they shared in September, we formulated our group. We spent a lot of time really kind of going over some of the norms, some of the education. Really having a chance for our team to be able to gel and kind of get to know some of the ins and outs. Because some of the people haven't even worked together, been on the committee before. So really kind of establishing some trust and really establishing, making sure that those boundaries and protocol are in place. We reviewed some of the data that was available to us with regard to some of the information presentation. And that was available on Edsite. So that was kind of a foundation starting going. October, we had looked at different things as well, which include some of the articles we had disseminated to people on the committee to review, to read, to give different perspective. We spent some time looking at the current grade four elementary schedule and how that compares to our schedule at the middle school. We had taught, reviewed some of the data that Shane had shared with you as a Y from some of the other schools within the state of Connecticut. And then we really looked to get some feedback from parents. So our committee came up with developing a survey to elicit some responses from our parents. We, in November, we take a look, kind of go through the timeline, review that parent information. Again, we really looked at trying to come up with some things to enhance what our current grade four to five transition supports and different opportunities presented for our students during the course of the year and how we can add and really enhance that experience from our kids based on some of the information from the feedback from the parents and from committee, committee members as a whole. In December, we then put together some, I'm sorry, and then we had also put together in December, not only we added staff feedback, which was our fifth grade teachers, and then we surveyed some of our students as well. We thought that that was important on this way. It was well grounded. So we had scrapped it for everybody. We also talked about where different departments were with regards to curriculum work. We looked at various models with feedback from the team as well as with our administrative assistants, based on the data that we collected in terms of what the staff, students and parents were hoping for with regard to our life arts rotation and honoring that and the importance of those programs within our building. We also talked about our non-negotiables of what we must include, the point we were talking about. So I can change and talk a little bit about some of the surveys and what those non-negotiables are.
So we thought it would be important to share with you some of the important things that came out of the survey. So in terms of actual feedback, there's roughly fifty percent of the fifth grade parents, almost a hundred percent of the students, and roughly fifty to seventy-five percent of the teachers that I went out to. So I went out to grade five teachers, counselors, sofa workers, anybody who works with a grade five student, life arts teachers. And there were a few things that came out of this that were very clear. So you can see the overall rating about the transition. Everyone was just asked, how do you feel the transition went? I like a five star rating. And I would say that those scores came back relatively high. Probably the thing we learned a long ways that two life arts classes are important. One of the things we had talked about was, do our fifth grade students need to live our classes a day? Across the board, parents, student and teacher, two life arts classes were important. What else was important was a dedicated science and social studies block. So they liked the idea of having a specific class that was, science is gonna be this period of time, and social studies is going to be this period of time. In addition to that, one of the concerns we had was the number of transitions during school life. Are kids getting lost in the trade? Is there too many classes that are moving back and forth between them? They go from an elementary school, they have one class or one teacher. Coming up to the middle school, they have four classes on team with four different teachers. The students themselves even said, it was actually okay. They didn't feel that they struggled at all with the transition. It was good news to us. One of the things we did find really interesting was we had students, parents and teachers rate across a whole bunch of different topics. What did you struggle with the most? Where do you think your students or children struggled with the most? The three top areas were math, organization and socialization, socialization with peers. And sometimes that connection with adults was a little bit harder for kids too. So that was something we need to work further into as well.
And that was consistent amongst all three of the parties that gave us the feedback. So it was interesting.
In addition to that, we asked about current practices that we have. So students, parents and teachers felt that the student tour and the student picnic were the most important part. And then we elicited some other response about what else do you think might be important for us to do to support you? And that was an open ended response that we took a look at as well. And Claudine's gonna show that information a little bit later as to what it is we're gonna do moving forward or add into what we do for our transition activities. From here, we worked on what some of our non-negotiables were gonna be. So based on the data, based on the survey thing, we got, we knew we had to reallocate time for math and for ELA. That was a must do. We had to find a way to reallocate time in the schedule to provide additional time for math and for ELA. We also wanted to keep looping. We know that looping is something that the community is used to. It's something the community likes. It's something our teachers like, something our students like, because when they start that next year, they can kind of hit the ground running and start going. They already have those connections with students. We were gonna keep global language and all life arts classes. Like I had said, I knew from our survey, we needed to keep both life arts classes because it was important to everybody across the community. And we needed to find a way to maintain what we currently have or flex in an intervention.
So this timeline kind of takes us up to, we're up until January. At this point in time, we had formulated some potential unscheduled, which we had shared with superintendent Givin and assistant superintendent Spaziano. We had also shared with our full admin cabinet as a positive problem practice, where we shared very much what we are sharing with you this evening with our team to get a different perspective from our current, our fellow administrators. So that was helpful information for us to, to consider and to ponder as well. We also talked about special education and the needs of our special education students and interventions that would be necessary to help make that transition successful for our grade five as well as upcoming school visits. So all of that happened in January, in February, in between January and February, we did have some of our members of the committee make some onsite visits to Old Sabre and to Branford. So they had the opportunity to visit some of the other schools, talking with some of the coaches, talking with some of the teachers, talking with some of the administrators within the schools themselves, bring back additional information and perspective and have a chance to see the runnings of how some schedules and how some of our non-negotiables fit into what currently does practice in those settings. So that was helpful. We then kind of in February further split ours, our larger group, the subgroups to try to be able to accomplish more. We looked at, again, reviewing schedules and having our team come up with a lot of variations and essentially corriging those non-negotiables in there and coming up with different scenarios. We then, again, in March, presented some information to central office. We had made what we thought in March was the final determination with regards to the schedule. And I want to emphasize that this was very much collaborative effort. So when we did share out to our staff, a lot of our staff had some deeper wonderings who were not on the committee. So, you know, we did open up a outlet opportunity for staff to be able, should put their thoughts and communicate in there. You know, there's some significant concerns in some areas. So we went back to the drawing board and we met with our committee members again and addressed the significant concerns that arose and revised the schedule, began to be able to, to be able to meet the needs of not only our students, but to be able to relay some of the concerns that staff was sharing. So I really want to emphasize that this was very much a collaborative opportunity, not only amongst the administrators working together, but collectively for the building, for our faculty as a whole, to be able to articulate their needs as well as needs of students. And then we had in April, we had made a final decision with regards to the schedule of what we're presenting to you this evening. We had then, rather than at a larger scale meeting, we broke it down into smaller segments. So we had shared the revised plan to our life arts teams, to our grade five teachers, to our grade six teachers, and to each of the departments of math, ELA, science and social studies. And we're here tonight to share what collectively we think is a really solid plan and think it's some good ideas moving forward. So this shows our timeline of what we have available for students. And in January, we had the opportunity, which is new, we created a website for families to be able to access, access in grade four. Anything that is presented with regards to transition for our students from four to five. So we have put on there, we have a Q and A with a question and answer with some of our current grade five students. Jay, Jason, Shane and I had an opportunity to kind of interview some of our students, ask questions with regards to, for example, and, you know, what was one of the concerns that you had as a student coming in as fourth grade and fifth grade? And how did that work out for you? If you haven't had an opportunity to see it, I strongly encourage you to take a look at the website. You know, I don't know how students is, is just, they did an awesome job. And, you know, many of the questions or concerns that become on the surface, those kids just were able to answer it and be able to visit on the first of experiences. And they don't give up their hand or was just amazing. So take a peek at that and have a chance to see that on the website. In February, this is new. What we did is we asked our art teachers to be able to share some current artwork that our current fifth graders did. And what we did is select some different pieces. We'll show it to you at the very end. We utilized that to create postcards. So every incoming student in grade four, Y in grade four received a message from us and Shane with this awesome technology skill, generated a computer message on there that looked like it was unprinted. But the way it generated was just amazing. So some of the feedback we had with the students from the parents that have come in at different times, when they come in to do the tours this year, that really stood out for them, made their kids feel welcome. It really made them feel connected and a part of the middle school, even though they weren't there yet. And it really got them kind of psyched and pumped up, you know, start thinking about the transition from grade four to five. And we included at the end of the presentation, some samples of the artwork. So it's nominal. In March, we had a grade four parent night. So parents came in, we talked to the parents, we gave them brief overview. And then we had some of our student leaders just to take groups towards within the building. That happened as well. And then we also had this year music info. So our music department had some different offender come in and be able to have children actually sample and kind of look at some of the different instruments as an option for them to play. So that was also done in March. In April, our, most recently, I think last week or the week before, our school council was presenting to the families what is back during the middle school years. So that occurred. And yet one more source of outreach to kind of be able to give them an idea of what happens and what the schedule looks like in a day of the middle, a life of the middle school looks like. Um, in May, we do have scheduled and we coordinated and have everything set up for our grades work step up day. So our students will be coming with their grade four teachers. Again, we will have the opportunity for our student leaders to bring the kids through the building, have tours. And there's icebreaker activities that our teachers will be planning with them. So that is set up. In June, we have, actually it's the end of May, but we have, this is new as well. We have our current Eastline Middle School student leaders going down to each of the three elementary schools. So there'll be one day that they're gonna be at Flanders, one day at Nyanic and one we have Lily B. To again, a further kind of a smaller setting, more intimate setting in their home base school, to be able to answer questions, to have kids ask questions. And maybe things have come up in some of the different presentations or the times that they've been in the building. And again, have kids hearing it from other kids, what life and no one feels like, especially from four to five. As always, in July, we did have families that had reached out. We, Shane and I have participated in many of the grade four transition meetings that are occurring. Sometimes we have students that may sit in some concern, some anxiety, some angst about that. So we have families come in and we will give them kind of individualized personal tours of the building in the summertime. That's always it would be done in July and August. And in August, we always have our new student, our incoming fifth grade picnic, which is always a big hit. The kids love it. So that's coordinated with our school counselors, some activities, some icebreakers. They have a chance to be outside and just kind of hang out against.
So we have the new schedule for you. It's gonna look a little overwhelming, but we'll take you through it. So the schedule is there on the right, but some of the important facets are on the left. So in terms of the decision that the committee had made for what grade five is gonna look like next year. So students will come in off the buses, go to a homeroom, kind of to start the day, look at their stuff organized. And then from there, they'll go to their life arts classes. That is a routine that they're used to. So at the elementary school, grade four students start in their life arts classes. So we felt it would be good as a transition to have a routine that they're used to having. In addition to that, we were able to have a sixty minute ELA block as well as a sixty minute math block, while still maintaining the forty-six minute science and social studies blocks as well.
Can I just jump into it with the first point that Shane had made with regards to students beginning? That was one of the things that we brought back to the drawing board that our staff felt was adamant and important. And that was something that we had put back in place. We didn't have that initially, but based on the feedback from the staff and the current model that's in place, that is one of the revisions and that's in exam.
Of course, the revision, I'm sorry.
Some adding the beginning of the home base for our fifth grade students. So that was one of the things that I think is a really great example of what exemplifies just in terms of the amount of communication and the advocating for kids on all levels by everybody, committee and faculty within the building.
So we have the sixty minute ELA math, forty-six minute science, social studies, still able to maintain a roughly twenty-five minute flex intervention time. In addition to whatever intervention time is occurring outside the team as well. And in addition to that, the reason you see two columns is because students, while on the same team, will be really in one of two groups. It's totally random the groups are gonna be sorted into. But what that does is it reduces that team aspect from eighty students to forty students. So one of those pieces of feedback with socialization was, there's too many kids that I have to get used to. It's too hard for me to get used to seventy-nine other students on my, you know, I'm used to a class of twenty. So we took that feedback and said, all right, if we can make it smaller groups, we can slowly get them used to being in a much larger group.
I think too, the other important piece to consider is, you know, the feedback that our coaches and our intervention scavens as well. When we had Mrs. Bobette, my administrative assistant, she would have an assistant that was on the team looking at the schedule. We looked at the schedule collectively within the whole building so that we did not have split flex. There was equity for all students with regards to that intervention time. And to be able to have the accessibility of the coaches and interventions to be able to help, especially in the fifth grade, to kind of be able to be additional supports. So I'm really proud of the work that everybody, you know, had put time and effort and in some serious thought in. And I just want to say to both, thank you both Shane and Jason, you know, for, for supporting this as well.
Claudine, could you just note, just quick, for the time, just so everybody knows, we went to now a sixty minute English language R, sixty minute ELA, sixty minute math. It was previously forty, forty-six minutes, right? Forty-seven minutes, yeah. So the amount of minutes now we're capturing over the course of a week, a month, a year has significantly increased in those two core areas.
Correct. It's a nice chunk of time.
Exactly. That was one of the main reasons for doing that, yeah.
The day, we just kind of reallocated and shifted some of the, the time within our. The day, we just kind of reallocated and shifted some of the, the time within our day. We looked at some of the passing, we looked at, you know, some of the time within our life arts. You know, still maintaining the integrity of the two programs, but just kind of reshipped and reallocated how the day was spread out.
So can you just clarify two things, sorry? One is, so time came away from something. So is that, that life art classes got short, where did the time come from? If you, if you added time to some, something had to come away.
So we initially had in grade five right now, we have a forty-seven minute flex period. And we had gotten feedback from staff that it was just too long. That, you know, our students who received tier three, forty-seven minutes, it's great. And then at the tier two level, approximately twenty-five, thirty minutes is great. It's like a slow step up into tier three. So we were able to reduce that flex time to gain the minutes back without impacting the life arts schedule.
So what is, does everyone know what a flex period?
So we use flex for a couple of different things and we're taking a look at it even more depth than here as well. But one of those things is time for tier two interventions. So our students who we know are struggling in math and ELA. Our English and math teachers would take those students on and work with them in a more, in a smaller group, in a more individualized, small group setting with more targeted goals. That's one way we use it. The other way is just supplementary instruction. Maybe there's something for our fifth graders, for example, one of the things they struggle with is coming in and learning Google Classroom. It's new to them, they're not used to it. And so that time can be used to help students with executive functioning when they come into grade five. They can learn a little bit more organizational skills, how to navigate Google Classroom, so that time isn't taken out of their core classes.
Okay, so what, what are the rest of the students doing? They're all assigned to one of those activities that you just, you just spoke of.
Varies based on student need is what it comes down to.
But it's individualized, it could be an extension of a learning of a lesson if some students need some of that. It could be some enrichment type of activities because we are not receiving any type of interventions. It could be sometimes some of our.
How soon do you have this in place? When's the child? I mean, obviously for fifth graders that have never been in our system before the middle school. You, how long does that take you to like get up to speed on what they need and what we're going to do with their flex period?
Usually it doesn't take very long. We have diagnostics assessments that we give at the beginning of the year. In addition to the data that the elementary school sent us, so that you can give us a lot of information to look at. The coaches and interventions kind of cycle through that or with the teachers to take a look at that information as well.
Yeah, so Jill, many of our interventions, coaches have already meeting, our school counselors are meeting, you know. All, anybody who needs some type of level of support are currently meeting and talking, first thing with the elementary staff. There's a lot of communication that happens behind the scenes, even for kids that step foot in into the building. So we have a lot of the, the analytical data in advance. And then we do the diagnosis pretty early.
So if you have a student who's really, really intelligent and is four, do you offer them alternative programming? So let's say her son was super smart. Anyway, so let's say, I'm sorry, just going to go, so, and my daughter wasn't. So what I'm saying is you will offer programs for those kids besides special needs. They maybe need a little bit more stimulation because they've already bust through fifth grade and they're ready to go sixth grade or high school. So that option is out there for students.
Those are those enrichment type of activities. So.
That's it, right there.
We have small groups that will work together and putting together a team newsletter or putting together an update of information. Sometimes we have students that will come in and interview us with different aspects of what our day or what our jobs entail. So there's a lot of different. Yeah, it's a lot of the challenge.
Okay, I just assumed those students were skipped over.
So can I get one more clarification and then we'll go around, because I think there's lots of questions, but I just want to make sure I understand. So within Akiva, there's actually almost like two separate, there's, Akiva is almost split in half. Because the forty students are only staying within their forty students and the other forty is within their forty. So they really don't see the other forty, so you've shrunk it.
We've shrunk it down further if there might be the need for a whole, let's say a team meeting.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, right. But from the class to class, they're staying with those forty.
And we do have it right now where they can still see those other forty students in their life arts classes and they'll see them at lunch as well. So they'll still be mixing in some aspect, just not to the extent it is with the eighty students right now.
Okay, I know we was.
Yep.
We asked them on.
I'll, I'll kind of just start with, with two for now. The first one should be a quick hit, follow up on the flex periods. How often are you all evaluating shifting needs and like how reactive is that block to let's say a student who might have struggled with a certain objective in math class that morning versus a kid who might need more of a long term? Like how often do the priorities and groups in the flex period shift?
So we, right, we have a, a cycle right now that we follow across the building, which is every seven weeks. So teachers have to take up like a hard reevaluation every seven weeks. Doesn't necessarily mean a student's going to change. Students on a day-to-day basis, if they need it, that's why we call it flex, because it's flexible. The teachers could say like, hey, can I borrow so-and-so for today because it's just not going well in class? Or they struggle with this particular objective, the teachers are really good at that on team and just kind of saying, all right, let's take this kid today, you take this kid tomorrow. And they've gotten very close with it.
So standard seven week rotation with modifications based on more urgent pressing. Okay, cool. And then one of the, I really appreciated how part of this process with outlining our non-negotiables. As someone who has kind of a, is a little bit removed in an outside perspective, it was really helpful to see that. So thank you. And I also really appreciated the fact that you guys did site visits. I'm curious if you could just quickly summarize some of the like key takeaways and learnings. Like what were shared challenges that were unearthed? And then what were some things that maybe we haven't pursued yet, but other schools that are wrapped up with similar things? Just any, any kind of key takeaways.
Scheduling, you know, when we go to our assistant principal roundtable or Jason with that his principal roundtable. That seems to be a common theme is just how to try to incorporate everything into your day with time and schedule. So I think that was one of the biggest, you know, kind of roadblocks, so to speak. I think looking at the resources that we have as compared to some of the onsite visits as well of some of the locations. There appear to be more support internally within the system that they visited. So that kind of made it difficult to be able to replicate what they have when we have the resources we have, they have the resources they have. So I think that middle ground was to try to be able to put things in place and to, you know, hold back things for future considerations as well.
One quick follow-up and then I'll. In terms of ELA and math, minutes per day, sixty minutes, where does that fall in line with what you saw at other districts?
So I can tell you that the majority of, well, almost every elementary school you look at, or not elementary school, sorry, middle school. So it was six, eight middle school, their blocks are forty-five minutes. The middle schools that have grade five tend to vary it up a little bit. I know the ones we visited were a little bit different, their grade five ran on a different schedule, but sixty minutes was in line with what they were doing. Especially coming from an elementary school, approximately ninety minutes to do both ELA and social studies as well as math and science.
Some of the districts do play with the science social studies. So we really catch more time in ELA and math. But if we do our social studies in our science programs correctly, we're integrating those standards from ELA and math into those two. So it's a more cohesive program.
And I think we going back to the feedback we received from our parents and from our staff. They felt very strongly that they wanted the science defined minds for the science, social studies, and Shane was talking about it at the beginning. Because they don't want that to get necessarily kind of lost or some of the curriculum not to be able to be hit upon. You know, even though there is a lot of cross-curricular integration, but they definitely wanted that defined. Thanks for that.
So I think everyone has a bunch of questions, so why don't we do, why don't we do two each? Just start and then we'll kind of keep going around until we're done. Does that work?
Yeah, some of the questions that I had, so what, you can, you can allude a little bit to this, but what role do the fourth grade team? Like what data do they send to, to the middle school? And like what is their role in helping this transition from fourth to fifth grade? Scan a little bit of, on how that works currently and is it going to change with this new model or being the same?
That's the one, just so that I can clarify the role of the fourth grade teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think a lot of that comes out in a lot of the different transition meetings that we're in. You know, we do have the opportunity, like I said, to send some of our staff down to talk to some of our teachers. We had some of our coaches or interventions go down and speak with our fourth grade teachers. And they also accompany our students for the step up day that's coming up in May. So they're familiar with the building and process, you know, and in conversation, they, they did share with us, you know, some of the feedback from their lens from fourth grade to fifth grade as what has come up as concerns. So we tried to incorporate that into the framework of what we're.
And our, our fourth grade, the fourth grade teachers share with us at the end of the year, a spreadsheet that has every student on it as well. They're like diagnostic results for the year, if they were intervention or not. So that we have an idea of where they started the year, where they ended the year, and any needs they may have right when they enter the building.
Okay, could you plug a little bit more detail about life arts teachers? I don't know what their curriculum is, I've never, just I don't know what they do. What are you teaching?
Roll through basically how it, how it works, the, the life art schedule and then incorporating in Spanish and French as well. What, what the offerings are basically.
No, no, no. So we have, we have rotations, our students select if they're going to be in art. In music and in music, they have an opportunity if they're going to play an instrument, choir or bands. We also have, we have the tech ed, we have our family consumer sciences. And then PE, PE is something that they have every single day. So during the course of the trimester, so by law, all students have to take PE on a daily, every other day, every other day basis. So that is, that is.
So the students selects what they want to take and when they want to take it.
Students and families, yeah.
So they sign up for that before they begin their fifth grade year?
We, we have those conversations, some know, some are still deciding in the summer. So we try to get as much information as we can when we're building and we're looking at building schedule. Are we incorporating word language into that as well? So they do have choice, they do have, you know, input with regards to the different rotations during the trimesters.
Okay, when you do looping, it sounds like the classroom is forty in size, if I understood you correctly. And so the looping is like four, five, five, and then five, four, gosh, four, five, and then. Whatever. So that's what they do in all of the KIVs now. There's consistency against across all the KIVs.
Yes, so we loop in grades five, six, so the teacher will have them for a two-year cycle.
Okay, so what, what, when did all the other stuff, when the building was originally built? I'm sorry, I've got to ask this question. When the building was originally built, there were four types of educational process, no, called processes or the way that you taught and those are all gone. How long have those been gone? I bet you can't.
Six years ago, we were down. Originally it started with one floor was single year, one floor was a multi-age year. And the multi-age group was five, six, seven, and eight, and it was also a five, six, seven, eight, twenty kids of each grade level on one team. That didn't last quite as long. So we did a, at that point, my predecessor did a pretty comprehensive analysis to just see where we were for performance by. So it really made sense to look at that building in groups. So not one team was perceived as being better or more advanced than one. So it was a very unified kind of program. We've been rolling, if you remember a couple of years ago, grade seventy, multi-age team, we just had. And so that was a great time to call that team. We repurposed, you know, that team out, we had some retirements, so we were able to absorb all that. And then two years ago, we had the barren students who was a five, sixteen. So that was that, ten teams to eight teams and all moving, no one multi-age.
So it's all the same theme or teaching process through the whole building?
Two more multi-age, that sort of backside, it's not that high with multi-age. Because it's, you can have a really, so, you know, maybe socially kind of more fifth grader and then, you know, sixth grade, somebody who's really advanced here, it's just not a good mix to have them. Yeah, so we looked at the research and we said, you know what, the multi-age models, it doesn't fit really well.
So it was really in place about ten years, no?
It took a while.
It was, it was, my daughter started fifth grade when they opened the building.
I would say it's been an ongoing change over the last probably twelve years.
I'm glad to hear that changed it, because it was an interesting experience for all the parents during that period, and I'm sorry, I had to go.
Yeah, that's a good question. Clarify something on what Jill said. This split, the groups A and B is only in fifth grade or is, it's not continuing, okay?
So what you see right here is just.
Okay. I have questions, but I want to also allow.
Sure, I'm just wondering, you said the biggest struggles were math organization and socialization, so how is this going to address those things?
I think with the, the longer math period. We'll have, we've captured so many minutes over the course of the year that that will help support that. We're also looking at a few resources that will help support math as well. We've highlighted a few that really do require more of a sixty-minute block. And I was actually helping a student with one of the activities today and he came down and they seem to like those activities as well. And I really like working on it for that longer period of time. In terms of the organizational component, that's a conversation we're having with teachers about, right? Now that we have this model, we know organization is a concern, how can we support these students in organizing? Do we teach them a fuller method? What is it that we're going to work on with them to help support them? And we have that flex block to help them with the executive functioning right off at the beginning of the year, which is something our fifth grade teachers ask that they could do, which is great. In terms of socialization, reducing the number of students that are meeting on a day-to-day basis, that was one of their greatest concerns. And parents as well, there's too many kids, they were struggling to interact with so many kids. That reducing that number, we feel would be beneficial to them, just so that they're slowly learning their peers instead of jumping into really a sea of kids compared to the little pond that they were in.
And we'll continue to offer advisory, so that will be incorporated. And that is, you know, our, our goal is, our hope is really the smaller groupings to be able to enhance, you know, the, the impact of those connections even more so than before. Our staff looks really hard with advisory, with connections, and hoping that this will help to be able to, you know, solve some of the concerns that we're.
Okay, thank you.
I think going, going back to our original problem, why we kind of looked at this, you know, the, the overall route and achievement. It's an extra hour and fifteen minutes of instructional time a week. Now, so add that up over the course of the month, the year, it's, that's some pretty significant time. And that's what we're going to look to see, does that make a difference?
To, you know, the extra time that we added at the council time, you know, bonding it out till.
That's true, we did that this year.
That's extra time that we added this year, so that's.
Yep, so be curious, you know, this time next year to see, we made, we're seeing some, some signs of, of, of growth.
So one more quick question too, before I pass my, my baton. Fifth grade doesn't get recess, correct? They get, they get physical education every other day, but they don't really.
Every day.
Oh, they do.
They get the thirty-minute lunch and they have lunch and there's always a portion, you know, where they're pending to be able to go outside and have recess. Grades five through eight.
So ten minutes? It's thirty minutes, like twenty minutes to eat, ten minutes to go outside or?
Okay. I think they're outside longer than it takes them to eat.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Candace, I just want to, I didn't see a hand up go up, but I want to give you an opportunity.
Thank you. I have no questions, just praise for each and every one of you that have done a tremendous amount of work. Put so much into it and have really identified, I think, some really key areas. Both my children are in high school, but I do remember the transition and I remember speaking some of these things. Specifically the organization and the need to really hone in to help that transition. So knowing and seeing the work that you guys have done and then the plan going forward, I think is going to be instrumental. And I think it's going to be fantastic. So I thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Candace.
Thanks, Candace. I had a, I guess a couple, I'll try to limit mine to a couple of questions and then give everybody another chance as well. But, you know, when I my kids are, one's out of college and two are seniors in college. So it's been a while since the transition from fourth to fifth grade, but I still remember it. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a big challenge and that was a long time ago. And, and when I, I look at the, the problems and the challenges that the students have going forth, the fifth. I kind of broke it into, it was probably three things, it's probably four now. So it was. So it was academics, it's a, it's a, it was a big step up. Again, this is a long time, but the step up in in. Responsibility and accountability for academics was a big step up. There was the social side of, no, none of this little school, I'm in this big school, there's lots of kids. And I know some of them from other activities, but there's a lot going on, even though I'm in my Kiva and and stuff, so that social side. There's, well, there's the social side of getting know our buddy than the building side of just this big building. And then I guess there's now this fourth, which is technology, you know, Google Classroom and other, which I don't think my kids probably. I mean, there's a little technology, but I think it's it's probably now more prominent. And and so when I look at a lot, what we talked about, it looks like there's a lot that we're trying to do socially. To. Get the kids indoctrinated earlier, I guess, and get to know and see things, and and I think that's all really good. I like the idea on the academics of just getting more time. I mean, as you add it up, it it. It doesn't sound like much until you add it up over a week, a month and a year, and it adds up to a lot more.
Almost fifty hours.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that that's gonna make a difference. So I I like that. A a couple. Questions I had though, so one is, you know, we're talking about change at the middle school, I realize that. If your school principals aren't here, but are there also changes that we need to do at the elementary school in the fourth grade? To get them more academically or socially or technology ready. For that step to fifth grade, and I'm not, you you guys can't answer that, but it's just something that I think we should think about the. That, because I I do remember again, old data, but I remember fourth grade wasn't. We not only said, oh, it was a big challenge for fifth grade, we actually looked back and said, fourth grade wasn't hard enough to get them like the. It it ended up a big step, like if we could somehow meet a little in the middle, it sounds like we're making some changes. But maybe there's a little more we can do, also do at the elementary school.
I think so, I did my principal round table and it's every middle school struggles with that transition. Because even in. Old Saybrook, right, we talk about that comparison today, they're a really small school, they have less than five or four hundred kids in that school, so it's. It's a much different, you know, we use it as a base of comparison, but I don't know that we should. So we did use this problem is a central office administrative problem of practice, and we presented it. Which was great because the three elementary teachers gave us some really perfect feedback on that. I think one of their biggest thing. Is more instruction, because if you look at their minutes of math, their minutes of E L A per year. Are even higher than what we're getting now, but they don't have that robust life arts rotation that we have. So it's always, do we want to give up anything in life arts, getting instructional minutes? So I think we've done a good job this year in our committee to try to at least. Lay the foundation for what we, how we want to start with that, you know, and maybe we take it next year. Maybe add a little bit more and see how that goes. But there, I I don't want to speak to them because they're not here, but I think their general consensus, whatever. When we talked about that was that, you know, you need more instructional time, some of these concepts are critical for a business transition.
Yeah. Okay, and then, because you brought up Old Saybrook, and I know for me. For benchmark, I don't love Old Saybrook as our benchmark, it's smaller and they spend a ton of money on their, I mean, their. Cost per student, they're the highest, right? So your your R O I, Jason, which I will, we got to continue that R O I chart as Jason pulled together. But it really, I mean, when you, yeah, if you spend an extra five thousand a student. You hope you get better, you hope, it doesn't have to be, but you'd hope that way. So Rocky Hill is one, I don't know if we've done much for it, but that's the one that always stands out to me, their scores are always high. And they're actually low on the cost per pupil. Yeah, so maybe that's a, that's one that we can probe into, even at the high school as well, like, I don't know what they're doing. But they're the one, when I look at comparators, and I think they're similar size to us. They don't spend, they spend less than us and their scores are either around, you know, we do really well, they do really well, so it's. I'm not sure what they're doing and what they're, but it'd be interesting to look at at what they do and then. I I'm taking a third, sorry, was. I can remember what it was. Oh, then do other. Do other schools, is, we have that big drop in fifth grade. But there's very few fifth grade middle school, do the other schools see the big drop in sixth grade? And then we're, that's why we catch up in sixth grade, so they. So it, the problem is not East Line Middle School, the problem is holistically. Elementary to middle, whenever you make that transition.
Yeah.
That's a, that's the challenge.
I did some work here at UConn and. Fortunately, there were five of us that were middle school principals, and we all had the same struggles and so some of the. Yes, people are exposed to. Yeah, very common problem, I think, you know, I came from elementary school, it it's small, it's you can differentiate, you're there, you know, your your kids. So that's why I I like this idea of two, you know, sort of two groups within the one team, I think we have to. You know, bring down that going from twenty to eighty.
Yeah. Well, that's what, when I talk about all those different challenges, it's how many, can you eliminate some of those challenges? Which you're, that's why I like that idea is because one of the challenges is going from twenty to eighty and now it's like, oh, well, now we've eliminated. One challenge that, which is, it's good, so you hopefully minimize, let me go back around.
But it's a complex question, but I think you. Can probably easily sort it out for someone like me who's trying to figure this all out. So at this age, students are all developing differently, they're all in different places. Whether it be physically, cognitively, socially, or whatever. What's in place throughout the school? To assure that all students' needs are being met or even identified. That they are falling behind or moving ahead or having social issues or whatever, does that all fit in? To this whole beautiful scenario together, you know, the system for the middle school?
I think a lot of communication, we have a school counselor that is tied to each of the teams, so they break down their caseload, so. There is a weekly meeting called Kid Talk that they attend, so if the team of teachers has a concern about a student's social, emotional. Wellbeing or academics, or if there are behaviors of concern that they may know with how a child is responding. We would do some home influences, or something that may be happening outside of school. That is attended by not only our school counselors, but our social workers also participate in that as well. We're very fortunate that we have two full-time social workers, two full-time psychologists that support our teams as well to be able to. Meet the needs of our kids, they run lunch groups, we also have advisory, that means twice a month. And that's often the ten to twelve students. That is assigned to teachers that they follow, the teachers follow the students, we raise five through eight. So and they work on different themes that are constantly put together based on the test competencies. So it gives a time for more instrument settings for our staff to get to really know and relate to kids. We also have, as Shane had said, there's a lot of communication that comes up through the grades. As well as why are students or students in our middle school that is trapped, that is passed from when a child moves to grade six to a new team on grade seven. There's a lot of meetings that occur, we look at the balancing of teams to make sure that the needs of the kids are balanced, we send information to families. Who sometimes, Candace, will have certain requests, to try to fulfill, you know, one or two of your friends on a team, so that there is a social connection. To kind of clear up the classroom separation if there's issues with students that have a history of having difficulty getting along. So there's a lot of behind the scenes before kids are even placed together on teams, and there's a lot of communication with not only our staff within our building. But receiving schools as well, and that also includes descending schools, psychologists, social workers, special ed teachers, general ed teachers. A lot, a lot of communication.
Right, but how about a student, that was a very, I love that answer, a very, very complete answer. How about a child who isn't having problems in any of those areas, but is really bored because that child's actually accelerated and passed the curriculum? Well, how do you handle that?
We try to be able to provide some of those enrichment activities during that intervention time. We look at specifically in math, sometimes we have some of the accelerated math options for some of those students. So those are things that we consider, you know, and we look again always at the data, what the data is telling us and how we can try to enrich and enhance. And sometimes use those students as kind of supports and peers and give them an elevated status in the classroom. And to do some of that independent research, but to also be able to help, you know, the class and present the material of the class at whole and getting on kind of. That, that. That responsibility, that ability to be able to utilize the skill. Thank you for that detail.
But now we have adaptive technology, so it kind of sets work through this and then it creates a next level of challenge for that based on how they. So technology is really advancing.
How many teams are there?
I mean, Kivas?
Well, you have the Kivas and then you have the group of forty, but then each, there's teams within that, is what I'm understanding.
There'll be two receiving the grade teams next year.
So just two for the.
Two teams or two Kivas.
So.
Teams is twenty or forty?
The whole, the whole Kiva itself will be the eighty. So each.
That's, I think that's the team, I think it's in the semantics.
Okay.
You, yeah. Kivas each have eighty, eighty students.
So that's a lot of people for people to know and to get to.
Yeah, and they've got the four, four teachers, they've got special education teacher, you know, the coaches are involved in that. So the coaches really have come in to to play with a lot of this as well, with supporting the needs of the students both at either end of the spectrum. So there's a lot, and there's where that intervention time.
You know, I I did a teacher exchange to Australia. Years ago, like twenty-six years ago, and they go on a camp out. With the kids when they come in, so. Maybe we should do something like that, so like a week camping with fifth graders. Like two, two Kivas going out to Rocky Neck, I can see it now.
Oh, boy.
They they do it in Australia and they said that it minimizes all the socialization problems, they can work on math and.
Many of our, especially our fifth grade teams in the beginning of the year, they usually would do like a team building activity and on their field trips during the years, usually at Camp Haze. Many of our teams go there and that gives them that opportunity to kind of work together, you know, when when kids coming from different elementary schools, getting to know each other. Problem solving, and it just is really a really good day for them to interact on the team, so many of our teams do that early on in September.
That's great. I know Pfizer does a lot of team building.
We used to, I don't know what we do.
First of all, I apologize if I seem critical about the middle school, but when my daughter went, it was the first year was when your daughter comes home and throws herself across the bed and says. I'm such a loser, mom, I mean, it's just. It was just, it was not, a lot of parents were not happy, not just me, but when she got past fifth grade, it was excellent. But there were a lot of trials and tribulations, you guys were probably in high school when we went. So that's why.
Like Shane was born, yes.
What I'm saying is, thank you so much for your patience with me individually as a parent, an ex-parent, still a parent. Although. And this, but it's great, I can't, I mean, I wish that had been in place when my daughter went through. Because it was just, excuse my language, hell on wheels that first year. But they were, we all know what middle schoolers are like, I've been a middle schooler, you've been a middle schooler. Oh, God. Right, I mean, and and then a daughter, whoa, but anyway, again, you guys, this is impressive, I'm so thrilled. And thank you for your patience with explaining it to us, and I don't think any of us meant to appear critical, it's just like, who you want to know? We want, we want to, we want to know because we all care very deeply.
You know, and as we explain to our team members and all the people that we've met with, you know, this is, this is our best intention, you know, I think it's going to be. I think it's going to be standing back reflecting, is it a hundred percent? Maybe not, but I think we're going to have to make tweaks along the way, but I think, you know, that's part of any process, nothing's going to be a hundred percent right out of the thirty blocks.
But this is wonderful, thank you. One, well, okay, I may be overreacting.
Any other question?
Or compliments?
Or compliments, I have one more, just, so on the schedule, is it? Really that the first two blocks of every day is life arts? So is there any thought? And again, I, my head is thinking of adults, not not fifth graders, but. If you look at like Jeff Bezos, right, he taught his infamous, he talks at ten o'clock, he has all his hard meetings. He doesn't want to do it at like ten o'clock is when his mind is locked in, sharp, that's when he has all his difficulty. Five o'clock he has his easier meetings, and if something at five o'clock gets hard, he said that has to be tomorrow at ten, type thing. So is there any thought that? These early, like, should should math or reading or something be maybe the second block or something like that to? Kind of.
We tried, we did research on that, there's nothing really to interview. You know, there's a little bit at high school level, we probably all, you know, investigated that before.
Yeah.
Our experience is that middle school, especially grade five kids are on from the time they get.
Okay. Appreciate it.
It was my toughest. Was it? My six rears were off the walls after lunch.
Very sweet.
Oh, these are great.
Loved it, so that was a hit.
I love it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sorry it took so long for us to get you on the agenda, this is something that's really important and we wanted to. Spend time on, and this is really great and.
We do, because the 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 model that we shared with you was like version Z.
Well, and that's important though, because you know, you listen to staff who had some concerns and questions, and so that's why it didn't really come sooner. Because they had to circle back, we were planning to bring it forward and we stopped, we halted it, so. Still a work in progress, but.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Our top senior than yours.
It's like the type is there, yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
The next topic for discussion and action is to discuss the substitute hourly rates. To that.
But, yeah.
Mariana will take, take the lead, you're in charge, okay.
Part of that one, so. We, we decided this year, last year, we did have an increase in the sub rates to be more competitive, but. In looking at, I went back and looked at the same area towns that we looked at last year and we're. The one twenty-five rate seems to be. Pretty much in line with what everyone else is using on the, and since we are not touching the regular substitute teacher. Fine, we left the extended sub amount the same. The long-term sub is based on our teacher contract and right now that is being the same, that's step. It's actually step two, there is no step one, but that's the. Entry level. And then the only rate that we're really proposing to increase is the paraprofessional hourly rate, and the reason for that is. The change in minimum wage. So effective June first of this year, it goes to fifteen dollars, and we're already paying fifteen, so we're fine that we made that decision last year. But starting January first of twenty twenty-four, and then every January first after. The increase will be based on the employment cost index of June thirty of the preceding fiscal year, so. January rate will be based on the June thirty index of twenty twenty-three, so the one twenty-one. This year, they come out quarterly, so the, and will be notified sometime in October, November. I looked at the last, the December index. And in June of the previous year, and they were averaging around five and a quarter percent. So we popped a fifteen point seven five of the. That I meant to look, I'm actually the one for March is coming out Friday, and I forgot to take a look, so I'll take a look to see what that increases, but we. Figure it's probably going to be around a five percent. Don't know if anyone has any questions.
I mean, just for the record, I really feel like we don't. I mean, just for the record, I really feel like we don't pay our sons or substitute teachers enough, or, um. Not substitute, but paraprofessionals, they just really feel like it's such an important job and hard work. Just for the record.
No, it is hard work, you're right, um, and we, we've done some analysis too of other, uh. And some of the other, um, area rates, we pretty much fall in line with, you know.
We do, and the other thing we wanted to be cognizant of is that our, um, entry level, um, the block to bargaining, uh, agreement. Is sixteen dollars, entry level, so we certainly don't.
I understand.
Yeah, and in, um, so that was the other rush.
I understand completely, I just really feel like it's a tough job for one to get this.
Does anyone want to make a motion to propose substitute grades for this year twenty-four?
No, I get it.
Yeah, that's.
I'll second, you need a second.
Uh, cake second, we're good, uh, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion, there's. Uh, next topic is, uh, discussion information, or discussion information in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget update.
Alright, so, uh, one of these days, we're gonna end discussions on budget for maybe a two-month period, I don't know, we say, we're getting there. But, um, two documents attached, one is the one that you saw last, um, I said, we really didn't make any adjustments to this. Cause this is kind of a working sheet that, um, we're gonna continue to work at, and we won't done tonight, but, um, that was just that guide to. How are we getting to that six hundred and fifty, um, thousand dollar reduction, uh, on top of the, you know, the four hundred and seventy-five? And the health insurance rate increase. After some feedback from the last meeting, we went back and looked at those, um, we really had a lot to talk about the, you know, elementary, um, numbers. And where those sit, so we had talked about the, the students at Rocky Neck, um, and we did some deeper analysis. Of, uh, total populations that potentially could move, uh, for next year, um, and it's K to three. We wouldn't move K, grade four next year, cause that would be silly to, you know, move them for one year and then they move another school the following year. But if we did K three, it would be eighteen students, you know, from Rocky Neck that would move from Lily DeHaines to Niantic Center. And then you can see the two scenarios, though, and this is both with no teacher reductions at the current moment, um, at the elementary level. What the class sizes would look like with those eighteen students going to NCS, so it does balance it a little bit more, which is, is nice to see. Um, and we are still in that predicament though of. We had put in one elementary teacher reduction to get to the six fifty, so if we don't do that, we, we have that sixty-five thousand we need to find now. We also have a speech-language pathologist that we need, um, for, uh, uh, to hire as well. Um, my elementary, middle school, correct, yeah.
Yeah, be an L V H middle school split.
Yeah, and that's a seventy-six thousand.
Right, it's seventy-sixty-five that we budget for entry level, and then eleven, roughly eleven.
Roughly eleven more, so, so roughly a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, between those two positions, if we don't. Reduce an elementary, um, position, and again, I want to reiterate, you know, there, at this point, we would be looking to hire. For two or three elementary positions, we have rooms, so there's, nobody, again, nobody's losing their job if we, you know, cut a, uh, a position. But it comes down to the numbers and, you know, with Board of Ed in looking at these, you know, how you feel, putting it up against our guidelines, um. And there's, you know, obviously there's always room for growth, especially at that kindergarten level, as we move, you know, into the summer, um. And that's kind of, I'll, I'll stop talking there and kind of open it up for some discussion as you look at those numbers.
Should we first? Or how do you want to have a discussion about the Rocky Neck? Like, should we discuss whether we're aligned, but.
Yeah, why don't we?
Cause that would. Change, could change by discussion, so.
Yeah.
Do people, I, I guess, what are folks' thoughts on taking, what's the official name of the? It's Rocky Neck Village?
Hot Rocky Neck Village.
Correct, Village. Um, which is closer to Niantic Center than Lily B, from a proximity standpoint. What are people's thoughts of moving the Rocky Neck Village to NCS?
I think it's a great idea, we should retain the ability to move students where we need to do that to keep the ratios what they are. My only concern is what is the process informing the parents, that, I don't know if you have already started that?
No, no, not at all, no, this is just initial discussions, um, we would need to inform them, you know, via letter. Um, that, uh, again, it's not a large group, so, you know, it's, it's a smaller group of population, eighteen students, but. Those families would need to be notified by a letter that this would be the plan for next year, um, we're open for conversation and so forth, but, uh. There might be a few students in there that, um, require, uh, as in any, um, any area of East Line. More specific, um, supports, so one or two, potentially you might need to stay at Lily B if there's need. Based on the programs there, I don't know that for sure, but I'm just putting that out there, that, you know, there, but we, and we average it out to, there's eighteen eligible students. That would go from, nine, it could go from nine, from Lily B over to Niantic Center, and, you know, that, that overall, you look at that overall student enrollment count too. It would bump the one seventy-four that Niantic Center currently has, that's, that's, you know, we, we really have always won that in the two hundreds. It gets it up to one ninety, and then with, keep in mind, uh, North Breivik coming online next year. Some of those units, that's gonna be spread out over the next probably two years, but there should be eight to ten units online by the start of next year. And we estimate there could be another thirty students that could come out of that all said and done potentially.
Can we keep communicating, how could we continue to communicate with the Board of Finance, just going to those few meetings that I went to, it was like, they have no. Because we live it every day, or most, we live it every day, sometimes I feel, I think, in my opinion, that they miss. Some of how, what's going on in the community impacts our, our lives as supporting the education, so it's not our lives, but your life and everyone else's. And I, I think maybe we need to somehow communicate to them and say, this is, this is where our extra students are coming from. This is where our extra cost is coming from, so it's not such a shock of budget time.
I'd be happy to share, we go to their meetings, I, I, on a Wednesday evening, not everyone, but as we move forward, I'll have, happily go and share out, you know, that.
Right, we're coming on, because I mean, I drive through town going, oh my God, they're gonna get another kid in that. I just about, I, I drive through my neighborhood going, okay, I see a stroller there, I mean, I just, you're, after doing this for so long, you become a chain, oh my gosh.
And we can, we can continue to keep them apprised of what those numbers look like, and it's good it's not all coming online, North Breivik has started next year.
Oh, I know, but I want to know.
But it's gonna gradually increase and fill up as they complete those units around the White House, it's, it's, so, I'm gonna, I know, it'll be torn down, but I'm sure it'll be. At some point, the issue we run into with the class sizes too, with the number of teachers, because if you reduce or you add. You jump up like six or seven kids right by doing that one way or the other. So, you know, if you're at thirteen, you know, right now, at, at, at K, and you cut a teacher or reduce a teacher, you jump up to seventeen, uh, or eighteen. So it's like, it's a big, big jump one way or the other.
Should we offer them days at a classroom?
We could do that, yeah, at some point, yeah, next year, we can, we could offer that again.
And the data on the differences, the class size has on student achievement, I mean, it's clear that. If you have thirteen, you have eighteen, the teacher's gonna have a different level of outcome at the end of the year because of the number of.
Yep.
Children.
Yeah.
I mean, that's another point of, you know, discussion to realize.
Yeah. Now, you know, Slanders has eleven point seven, that's, that's pretty, that's the lowest, and that, that's pretty low. If that didn't grow, I mean, I probably would recommend looking at first grade, i- i- you got twenty point seven, that's pretty high for first grade. Um, there might.
Guidelines, isn't it?
It's beyond our guidelines for grade one, yeah, eighteen is the cutoff for, uh, grade one and two, so, um, there might need to be some. Movement there or shuffling, uh, a- and again, we, we saw always away from the summer, but. You just have the predicament of, we don't reduce anything, just now that we still need to find a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, roughly, to those, those two of the positions.
So. If I go, if we do make the move of Rocky Night Village, it actually makes the decision of the one teacher a little harder.
It does, yes, it does. Good point, yeah.
In a weird way.
In a weird way, it does, you're right.
And it does, and, and it all, doesn't matter, but it looks like it's only sixteen students, or at least that's what the math is. It's only sixteen that have moved to go from one seventy-four to one ninety, and for, so it's.
That could be the two that potentially are staying back, yeah. And again, that's, yeah, not sure, have to work through that, correct him?
Yeah, there's at least one that, you know, I talked about, she showed me the list, and then I had a question for one of the elementary principals about the second. So, but that was.
Okay, yeah.
And there wouldn't be any siblings that would be separated, uh.
No, we checked on that too, that's important, no, so there would be no, no separation of, of siblings, that was why, cause there's more than eighteen, and that's why. We would still end up leaving, you know, a few alone, so the fourth graders, it was like a fourth grade, first grade, so we, we lucked out with this grouping that there's no impact. Cause if we went through that, it would be districting and.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, over that, yeah, we just finally this year finished that out with those, those kids moving on and split and, yeah.
What's, what's the, this? A thought, what if we said that in twenty twenty-four? This idea, but for the twenty, let me just make sure I got the year right, yeah, it's not next year, the following, so twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. That we move Rocky Nate Village to Niantic Center. And the, in, in, which gives parents, everybody plenty of time to understand that that's going to happen, and there's not. It's not gonna be thrust upon them and at the end, that also then opens up our door, makes it a little easier. Because Niantic Center first grade is, is very low, um, you know, lower than probably private school. Uh, class sizes, so you could pull. For me, it's like an easy, with the no change, the one reduction, it seems like it's blaring, that that's the one place that's pretty low. And that could solve some issues, uh, that would take care of this year, but I do like the idea of getting. And, and the other thing about delaying is if the, that Bride, North Bridebrook does end up putting fifty students in. Then maybe we don't want to move, maybe we don't want to move them, because now all of a sudden, if fifty students, NCS is at two twenty-five. Two third, now it's starting to push its limits, and we may take a fresh look, so that would be one. Thought, or, or not that we're moving it in twenty-four, twenty-five, but we're considering moving it in twenty-four, twenty-five, so we just get a, at least single.
Notify much earlier and, yeah.
So that's one option which solves like the current problem and puts the parents, lets the parents know that something is going to change. Um. But I'm also, I understand that may not be where people are, any thoughts on that?
I think the more advanced notice we can give families, the better, so for that reason in particular, I would be in favor of. That with the caveat that things could change within a year, we know a lot changes. And even like the, if we're still not going to move kids who are in the fourth grade. What would that look like for numbers and siblings impacted, right, there's gonna be a ripple effect, so. I mean, assuming we dig into kind of implications of that, I think that there's a world in which we could give families more advanced notice. I would be leading towards that.
So you're saying notify also at the same time, I assume the NCS parents when this, when the Rocky, Rocky neck students come in. But send a layer out to everyone, is that what you were saying?
I think, uh, I think it's let the Rocky Nick Village parents know that there, we may in the twenty-four, twenty-five. School year look to move, redistrict them, or, uh, move, whatever, where they will be going.
The boundary line.
You will advance their education. But aren't we voting on that tonight?
Well, we could, we could defer that and then make a decision on, we need to have one teacher with, and then. If we're in line, that Niantic Center first grade is the one that is the lowest, other than in kindergarten, which we know that. We can't look at numbers yet, it's too early, um.
So it would be the Niantic Center for?
That's my proposal, I mean, we have to discuss, but that would be my thought, is that that's the one, because that would still put them at.
They'd still be lower than the Slanders.
Yes, yes, they would be lower than Slanders and lower than, or about equal to Lily B. Seventeen and, yeah.
So the purpose of waiting is to see what happens with, uh, Breivik.
That also helps us, uh, cause by this time next year.
Yeah, they'll all be, they should all be, they're all online or close to being online, yeah, yeah.
Jeff, do you have a strong preference?
Um, well.
It's always good to give more time, you know, even though this is a smaller group of, of parents, you know, that's, there's an unfairness in, oh, by the way, you know, it's. May first and your students are going to, you know, a new school next year, you know, whether it's one or it's a hundred, that, that's, that's a challenge. Um, I, I am concerned, you know, with, I know we need the SLP, um, with the dollars too, I don't know where else to find. You know, it's gonna be a reduction, so we're gonna cut somewhere, I don't know what or where that would be, so this would help. It would really balance first grade across all three schools, which is a good thing too. That's important, yeah, and there's no impact either, just eliminating position, nobody's job is impacted at all. So, I, I would probably lean in that direction, um, and give us more times, watch to see what happens with North Breivik. Um, and then, uh, begin the transitional, uh, process.
So we're not gonna really vote on this until midsummer or, well.
Well, I don't know if it really needs a vote, I think it's more, we just need to keep, oh, you know, abreast of where the numbers are heading and what, and then changes. And we'll, we're watching them daily, weekly, um, and I'll bring to you if, if there are any shifts. Or especially, you know, at K, there are any changes, we'll let you know.
Okay.
You do need.
Eric, this is Candace, do you mind if I chime in on this, or? I appreciate, I appreciate the time, um, I did have my hand up, just so you know, and then I did take it down.
I'm sorry.
Challenge when you're zooming in, so you, there's a pro and a con to it, so. Off, um, off the bat, I want to thank everybody for actually taking a look at all those numbers, cause I brought it up at the last meeting. Um, we have a lot going on in town from one end to the other, um, numerous, numerous projects, um. And the majority of them are going to be bringing students into this district, so I really like the fact that, um, it was noted that. There's gonna be an ongoing, um, uh, gathering of all of those projects that are on the books. And then, of course, there are others that are coming onto the books, right, so, um, just keeping abreast of all of those different things. Will give us a good heads up of where to go and what to do and how to navigate. Number two, those sixteen or eighteen students, um, you know, the transition will, um, is, it is a transition. And the sooner that we can get that information out to families, I think that is the better, uh, thing to do. Um, and also looking forward that, you know, that this is probably going to be an integration into two thousand and twenty-four. Where, yes, maybe that whole entire development may be over at Niantic Center School, um. I did note at the last meeting, and I'm gonna note it again, that when, um, anyone, uh, takes a, buys a home here in town. It does state that the Eastline Board of Education, it is up to the Eastline Board, um, of Education where students go to school. During the redistricting conversation, we were very clear about moving forward, um, and that, you know, things could change. Um, and then, of course, that we would have to, you know, navigate in those areas, um, I think that was it, so good job, thank you.
Thanks Candace, yeah, I was, I, I was eyeing the numbers and I didn't look up, so I, I, I missed you, I'll, I'll keep an eye out. Um, we also don't have anyone sitting in the seat, we're in little shorts, no one's looking at the TV as, as much, so, uh, thanks Candace, so. Um, Jeff, do you need something from us? And it, I don't know that it's a, a motion and a vote, but something so that you. If you're gonna reach out to Rocky Neck Village, just that the Board of Ed is considering or thinking about or something like. Do you need something that we're indicating to you, like, what, what would be the process of you, maybe that's a better question? What's the process of you telling Rocky Neck Village parents or? The village in total, if there is someone who has younger children or whatever, just in general, or someone new moves in, or what's that? Process that we're considering it?
Well, a lot would depend on whether we were gonna do it for next year or the year after, we're gonna do it. Well, a lot would depend on whether we were gonna do it for next year or the year after. We're gonna do it for the year after for twenty-four twenty-five. And yet next uh fall, we would notify them at that time and then.
This September.
Probably September, October, probably get into the school year October, then with reminders, January. So we have a, you know, process that that's in play. It's really technically how it should be done. Not, I would need to right away, you know, get um a letter together to get out to them. Notifying them for, you know, next year. It's gonna stir up questions. It's gonna, you know, it's.
If it's immediate.
If it's immediate for next year, exactly. Uh, and more, we're kind of processing through it. I I kind of go back to my initial. Thought that it might behoove us to wait.
Jeff, really quickly, for the transition for those students, it might behoove um to uh be proactive and set up. You know, kind of dates where um the new kids that are going to be transitioning in could come to. Visit the school, tour the school, you know, be in the school, you know, do like an ice cream social or whatever. We could certainly project it in any way. Um, and we have in the past, you know, we did do those things. So I thought that um it was beneficial really then. And it would be most certainly be beneficial now.
Yeah, that might be challenging too with thirty days left.
Can someone remind me or do we know is Rocky Neck Village or a lot of people renting there or? So we could also have, so whoever runs, I don't know if there's some association or whatever who runs it or or owns it. To get. Because we want to actually let even kind of everyone there know. And if you have turnover renters to make sure that it gets to them, because you could be where that falls through.
Like you said, somebody might have a two-year-old or a baby that was just born that that lives there. We know in in infinite campus, we can see siblings. They put in siblings, so we know, and that's how we can tell.
I guess what I'd like to say is put the board of ed is it's our decision. I don't want it to be your.
The board of ed discussed.
No, that's the that that's right. I mean, it it's it's kind of comes from us. Question, but. So are. And like generally okay, are we saying first grade Nyanic Center? And we're looking at the Rocky. For the twenty-four twenty-five school year. And we're not gonna, it's not a vote necessarily, but just looking for general. I think he has direction, which is probably good. And then we should. Maybe bring this up. For a topic in September.
See where we're at, see how many have come online to that North Pride Brook as well. And then just kind of gauge it and we we would want to pull the trigger uh in the fall. With uh starting that process.
So I'm just looking up on Rocky Neck Village. How big is it? I don't know.
Fifty-five units.
You've been on it, Jeff. Gosh, I'm just.
Mariana, Jeff, you have what you need for now.
Yeah, no, that that helps. And then it's just finding a few more dollars for that SLP uh, you know, position, but uh. You know, we're still, we'll see how the end of the year, you know, rolls out um as well. And again, things shift and change, but. I think we're in pretty good shape. So that helps. All right. So we'll uh we'll plan on that. I'll notify, you know, NCS, the grade one. And that will align those nicely too uh across the three schools.
Okay, so then that. Closes Eric's discussion action item and we move to administration reports. And in the administration reports, Jeff or Mariana, can you give an update on? The current year, if there's any changes.
Yeah, you wanna.
The so we'll start with the good news. So right now, based on on my projections with um still have a couple more months left with electricity and. And natural gas, but again, I'm being conservative. We are uh to the good. So I think today when I. Um, I just updated it quickly. I want to say we're about thirty thousand dollars to the good. So I think, you know, I don't foresee us. Having, you know, again, unless something, you know, pretty major has to happen, I think we will be okay. We will have. We will have uh made up the deficit. You know, I don't believe we will um have to go to the town. That's really good news. Some of our natural gas came in a little bit lower than, again, when I do my projections, I, you know, I'm starting in October with just a couple of months. You know. That have been really fully operational, so we tend to be conservative. So I think, you know, that's the good news. So we'll be okay.
Yeah, I just something that we said at one of the board of finance meetings, are. Do we contract yearly for all of our utilities? So we know what the price is throughout the year. So everything is.
Yep, so I go through CCM. And they have an independent consultant that. We um use and so they go out and they put up to um they put the our electrical. Contract out bid, so we're tight locked in for just on the um I always get it wrong, but we're only locked in on the supply side. The generation is ever sourced. That is not anything we can plot into. We have to get that through and and I might be getting the. Which is which. Um, so we're locked in until uh November, I think of twenty twenty. So so two years. So um and then we're we're lined up with the town. So their contract comes up right around then. So again, we'll go.
Thank you.
Non-lapsing account that we agree, when does that get set up?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's all set. Um, we, the letter is uh ready to go. We're gonna ship it out tomorrow to the town. Kevin and Siri wanted to wait. It's at a board of select meeting last Wednesday, and I talked to him about getting it set too soon. Send it to us so they have more time to digest it. So it will go to uh to them uh tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, so then, because if we get that set up and we do end up, let's say with thirty thousand or whatever it ends up. Be, we can put that right into that non.
That's right.
Lapsing account, which would be really nice.
Starting point. Should be great.
Yep, and um the only other thing I have to update, which I feel like I update on a regular basis, and then it goes nowhere, but I'm hoping crossing my. Keeping my fingers crossed, we have a. Project manager that has been finally assigned to us from Eunice. Um, we met last week. We have a uh initial planning session, I believe, uh end of May. So I'm hoping we will move forward with that project.
Yeah, I've got a, yeah, a couple items. Um, first being um some of the the baseball field. Couple of questions we're running around out there. Are we gonna get to plan it this year? Answer is yes. Um, so you obviously you see when you drive in, there's grass that's that's growing. Um, they are split seeding, so they're doing a little bit more seeding, fertilizing, it's being watered every morning. Um, and uh. Nice, Dallas range two recently, which is good. Um, and they're scheduled to play. I don't have the exact date of the game, but it's later, third week in May, I think. So they'll play, I think it's actually their. Last game or second to last game, and then any playoff games that we have, they'll be able to play on the grid as well. So we might be able to get. A few games and at least one, uh at least one, and then a few games after that, hopefully, um through the uh the tournament. So um they have to um they'll probably notice where the on the side of the field, if you're at home playing on, you know, left field. They are digging out, um they're gonna fix that area. This is where the pitchers practice pitching and on the other side are the batting cages. So that's next to be fixed. Along with just this looks even and fertilizing. So we'll be in good shape. Um, and ready to, ready to play a game on there. So. Except the lights work. There's a couple bulbs that need to still be replaced and the scoreboard. Um, they inadvertently, when they dug up the entire field, they sliced that line that goes to the scoreboard. So we just have to have a line. Into it and the process of working that too, so we can get the scoreboard. Actually, we're gonna have to get a new scoreboard out there, but at least we need the scoreboard working. So we're now flipping, you know, over silver. Old school, yeah, so. We're in good shape there. Um. Reminder about the town meeting next Monday, May eighth, uh and then the referendum, May eighteenth. So um we want to rally and get uh, you know, everybody out to vote on uh May eighteenth. Um, custodial negotiations are starting up, so we'll have our initial meeting on May night. So next uh next week. Um, and I think we have Candace, Bill. And Lee and Lisa are part of that. So you'll be getting, if you haven't already gotten it from Carissa, um. The uh the day we're looking at four o'clock. If it works for folks on the ninth. Um, so look for that email. That's just ground rules and then we'll spend some time after we do ground rules. It takes a few minutes. They'll leave. It's a Zoom. And then we'll talk about, you know, some of our needs. Mariana, Chris Lynn, we've met, we've got, we've crafted up, you know, thoughts about the contract. That changes, things we want to bring forward. So we'll do that. Um. Choose happy committee. So we've got our district by choose happy committee that uh does things throughout the uh the year. Um, if you're interested, we have a district-wide cornhole tournament. That is scheduled for Wednesday, May seventeen, in the grass area between middle school and lily bay. So. I'm still looking for a partner. Anybody's interested? I'm gonna play.
I am a strong maybe on this. I have to, I'll look at my schedule. And I will let you know. I might be your partner.
All right, let me know, Candace. What what uh four was it four o'clock, four? I think it was around like four o'clock. Um, that way uh now elementary season cleared out. So I'll get, I'll get, I'll put in my weekly update, the exact uh exact time. It's gonna be at the um middle school, between the middle school, the grassy area, the field between the middle school and lily bay. Yeah, yeah. So uh I'll um I'll push out information so you have the clear the time and uh and so forth. Um, and then the border of retirement, uh or or I should say the retirement party is set for the thirtieth. You saw that. To be at at the fish market. The reason I said board of ed, I wanted to ask the board of ed, in the past, we didn't do it through COVID, but in the past, we used to have like a little. Out here with with cake for our retirees, you know, just like five fifteen to six, then we come into our meeting. I'd like to get back to that. Yeah, agreed. So I, you know, we'll try and get them to just to to come to the ceremony and you got, you all can say thanks and recognize and then. They can go on their merry ways to start a meeting. So, all right, so I'm gonna look at that for um June fifth. Um, everybody's still here and um it's right after retirement party, but uh. Uh, I think May twenty-second is gonna be a long night and a busy night, but if it works, I'll I'll try for May, May twenty-second. One of those two dates. We'll look at for this. So great. I'm glad people are interested. And that was uh, that was it. That's all I have.
So that closes administration reports, committee reports. That goes to uh board comments and future agenda items.
We talk about school-based uh clinic, school-based health clinic again. I really think we need one, just my opinion, but. I think with all the of all the issues with counseling and. Really more, I really, really need a mental health clinic or behavioral health clinic, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, Kim, Kim did a fantastic job helping to gather up all the data. There's two organizations that we're looking at right now. Both organizations have all of our data. Nope, nope, there's no. So there could be some startup fees that we might have to absorb, but in discussions, we're thinking we just just start with at least the mental health side of things, accounting support. Then maybe work towards having a a medical professional or or licensed RN or, you know, the higher level. Um, not a doctor, but whatever that's. So get to that eventually, but at least we have to get a a ground base first, so they can start charging, you know, insurances.
That's what I want to be able to do.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, so we're just waiting here back.
Is there many? I mean, I really want to push this now.
No, there's no, no, it's really up to.
I love your energy, that's all.
So that's, it's in, we're just waiting to hear. Yeah, the UCFS as well as CHC are the two.
Wouldn't replace the council services. Suddenly be dealing families for services were already providing. It would be a new resource available for families. So we would just be a host. Site, we would not mandate that they have counseling in these centers.
So why not? Why can't we do that? I mean, I'm just thinking about all the money we could have every money to put other places within the budget.
No, this. Money's gonna go to pay, it's gonna pay for the the person, the clinician that's in. Um, we wouldn't be able to make money off of this.
All right, this is the wrong time for the discussion.
I'll tell you what.
I would like to be involved in that. Maybe you don't need a board of ed member in it, but I would like to be involved in it.
Well, once we hear back, if it's a go with one of the organizations, we can decide. Then I'm gonna bring it back to the board, because you all have to.
So we have a pre further discussion, pre further.
I mean, we we can, I just, I I would, let's just wait first to see if we.
When you're ready, why don't you bring us an update?
Could I have a meet, could I talk to you about it?
You want me to talk about like the special ed Bible for side of what related service?
Adult to adult.
Sure, definitely. Absolutely, absolutely. Kim's a good person to talk to.
Other board moments.
I have one. Oh, go ahead.
I don't know if you all saw the article today about the national literacy requirements. So I would just be curious, maybe play enough future. Uh, I know uh it can die and like, what do we do here? I know there's through the business department, there's some. Something I'd like to know more like what we do in. Do more, more is it just right, just going back on that.
These kids know nothing when they go to college.
Yeah, and even at this, so when I used, back in my days working in banking, I used to go to local schools, especially like middle elementary school. And like, you know, we have some curriculum that we partner with. So I don't know even, I know this bill is for high school, but like even thinking like. Middle school, like, you know, there's no check-ins.
Absolutely.
Liberty Bank used to do it in all our elementaries. Kim uh Binaco used to do it. But I don't know if she's still anymore because she's a regional manager, but we need to start with these students before they start to sign their student loans. Because by the time I get them at twenty-five, they know nothing.
Just just to. My experience, my son Narcisse Green does a fantastic job. She's our business teacher. And so my son took many, many of our classes.
Coming up with a.
Yeah, she does a great job.
There were activities previously at Flanders, though my son got really involved with that, yeah.
You know, one other unintended consequence is when the. Kids start learning, they ask their parents questions and the parents may learn something. That we holistically in our society just need more financial literacy.
When they come for their first mortgage, you would be. Amazed how much they don't know. And I love first time buyers. I love, I mean, I don't.
To educate them.
Oh, yeah, I'm their mom for sixty days, but 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 I'm dead serious. I just like these kids and then they've signed, well, sorry.
So on Saturday, there was an amazing uh event that was over at Mystic Noank Library. And my friend Melanie Greenhouse that Jeff knows and interviewed a couple of years ago. This is her second. Opportunity to do this with Easttime High School. And our school was so well represented. We had three students, Kai. But Bacalana Ritz, Ruby McMahon, and then Katrina. Help me with this last name, Shevchenko. And the whole project is Melanie is a a playwright and she's an amazing poet. And she and I became acquainted. We were doing volunteer work at Crescent Point and we'd go in and help the seniors there, the residents there with. Recalling events. So Melanie has this whole program, Melanie Greenhouse has this whole program. So uh. Junior senior is paired with a senior citizen in our town or somebody of their choice. And on both ends, we are connecting community with kids and both of them are saying this is like the most important thing that they've had. For their winter experience or. Um, like a quintessential. Um, caption of their life and who they are and how important both and both gain from this experience. So just an amazing experience that. Both and both gain from this experience, so just an amazing experience that happened on Saturday, the. The junior seniors at our high school. Met with the senior citizens, the seventy, eighty, ninety-year-old people. And then garnered their information, then put it into a poetic, non-rhyming poetic forms, and then just did such a beautiful job with it, so. I'm so proud of our, our seniors and our junior seniors, and so proud of them, and, um, one of the, I have a writing group that I facilitate over at the community center. One day a week, and one of my ladies was in the group, and she was just like singing the praises of her students, I just want to make sure that. These kids, they're, because these kids are busy people, they're doing like a million, you know, their sports, their music, their. Part-time jobs, and then they do this on top of it, and it makes all the difference, my woman, my lady just. Recovered from, uh, loss of a spouse, and then, um, some medical issues herself, so. It's helping people live longer, better, stronger lives, so it's one of those things that we're doing in our community that I'm really proud of.
Any other comments? I only have one quick one, which is graduation is coming, Jeff, in about six weeks. Um, middle school and high school, so. Everyone make sure you have it on your calendar. It's, you know, middle school, we generally don't get much turnout, uh, I think Candace and I generally get out. Um, have gone, if we can get a couple, I know it's back-to-back nights, and sorry for everybody, if we can get a few, they, they really do appreciate. Uh, just at least a couple of us, uh, to go, we don't need.
What are the dates, I'm happy to go if I'm available, that's the only problem.
It's here, it's, everything is here now, and, uh, the, the middle school graduation is moved. This year.
So we're talking, oh, I have it in my calendar already.
And so we just meet, we sit somewhere.
Yeah, you just kind of show up and walk on the turf field, there's not a procession or anything like that.
So six P M approximately?
Yes, yep, there's seating right on the, on the field for, uh, for both.
Last flag day.
Okay, so I sit with the kids, all right.
No, there's, um.
No, they're seating.
Dignitaries, but. Uh, yes, uh, but there is seating for where we.
Should we wear robes for different college graduation?
No, no robes, no, no.
So, and, uh, and then for high school graduation, it's, you know, we have, we do the professional, processional in, in the poll. Uh, but again, if everyone can kind of mark those dates, that would be great. Last chance, any other board comment? My emotion or turn.
Some of.
Second.
We are returning. Thanks, everyone. Oh, sorry, we didn't, uh, all those in favor of returning?
I second, oh, no, I moved it.
I didn't do my.